July 6th, Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission into session. And McKenna, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, in your packets, we have two, we have the minutes from June 1st and June 15th. We have an amendment to our June 1st meeting, a couple of sentences added to that. Are there any questions? Hearing none. McKenna, if you would, I have a call for motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Chair Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Drain.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Gay. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
On item number C, we have the June 15th minutes, and you have those in your packets. Are there any questions? Would call for a motion, please.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Day.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Same.
Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Commissioners, in your packets, you have the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Ben, do we have any old business? We're now going to enter into our public hearing. Hamp, if you would do your specialty.
Request that you order that the record for tonight include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, also the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
I swear to tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Our first public hearing tonight is 2023-02, RWC Housing Authority of Bowling Green and Live the Dream Development. Care of Abraham Williams have filed an application to close approximately 5,098 square feet and an unnamed right-of-way along Double Springs Road and approximately 2,459 square feet and an unnamed unimproved alley running perpendicular to Double Springs Road, adjacent to and north of the property at 500 Beauty Court, and located between 480 and 490 Beauty Court and 404 Double Springs Road, 725 Gordon Avenue, and 729 Gordon Avenue. Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Let me get to the right slide here, maybe. No, it's not, there it goes. Okay. So as you mentioned, this application before you this evening is a proposal to close both a portion of an unnamed right-of-way and an unimproved alley. So if you look at the aerial view there, that'd be kind of the flag-shaped area outlined in red. If we look at the preliminary plat that was submitted, if the application is approved, the unimproved right-of-way areas will be consolidated with the adjacent properties that are owned by both the Housing Authority of Bowling Green and Live the Dream Development. The applicants have submitted all required items, and therefore, the staff's recommendation is for approval with a suggested condition as noted on page two of your report. And that is that a plat consolidating the closed right-of-way with the adjacent properties must be recorded at the Warren County Courthouse within 120 days of final approval of the right-of-way closure by the Bowling Green City Commission. I believe that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for this request?
I'm just curious, what's the reason for closing?
So, it was never improved, and if we go back to the aerial view, the Housing Authority has actually already added parking in this area unknowingly that was not actually part of their property. And then, kind of the same goes for the unimproved alley that has existed for years and years. You can see there's even like a storage shed right in the middle of that. So they're just trying to clean all that up, and I think they may have some other plans for some improvements in the future, but I know that they are here and could probably answer or speak to a little bit more to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other, thank you, Mr. Graham, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative from the Housing Authority? Yes, sir. If you would state your name and address, please, sir.
Julian Conway, and I'm the surveyor with Arnold Consulting Engineering.
Swear to tell the truth?
I swear.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other comments or anything you would like to add to this request?
No, but any questions you all have, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, as Ms. Hurt said, this is just, it's, I guess it's marked as an alley, but it's never been improved. It's just vacant space. You're just gonna take that vacant space, I guess consolidate that with the adjacent lots?
Yes, sir. It will be, there's a property line already splitting the two lots, and it'll just be extended to the back of the alley. And then each lot will get whatever is behind their existing lot.
So...
And it was, it was an alley that was platted back in one of the very first plats done in Bowling Green and just was never used.
So you have no objection to staff's request of filing a new plat once these are consolidated? All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a comment or question regarding this request? Yes, sir. If you would come to the microphone, please.
Leroy Tan.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Leroy Tan. I live at 481 Double Springs Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'm concerned what kind of building they can put up. Are they gonna put up a structure of apartments, or what?
I don't think that, I don't think that's for discussion tonight. So, it's my understanding...
I got an app book.
Okay, all right.
Let's let the applicant speak for the Housing Authority. Yes, ma'am. We didn't get your name and address, please.
Katie Miller, 247 Double Springs Road.
Swear to tell the truth.
I sure do.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
All right. We're not, we're adding on to the existing building that's already there. It's gonna become a food bank. Cavalry Baptist Church is here, they've received grant money. We're just going to expand what's already there to add a food bank.
Ms. Miller, so to your understanding, will there be a new structure in these, these spaces that are currently marked as alleyway?
There should not be, no. We're gonna go off the back part there before you get into the red, the back of the building that's already there.
So, Mr. Gay, does that answer your question?
We're gonna add in addition to what's already existing to make it larger for a food bank. So no new apartments, no new nothing, it's just gonna be a food bank.
There won't be no living quarters.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I want now.
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's just a single level, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight in the audience has a question regarding this request? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, would you call for a motion, please?
I make the motion to approve the right-of-way closing docket number 2023-02, RWC, with a condition as listed in the staff report. My motion is based on the findings of fact and presented in the staff report and the testimony presented in this public hearing that the right-of-way closing is in compliance with Section 3.16 of the Warren County Zoning Ordinance.
Second.
Chair Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and final recommendation goes to the Bowling Green City Commission. Our next item tonight is 2023-40Z County, Blevins and Blevins LLC. Care of Chris and Merritt Blevins has filed an application to rezone approximately 3.49 acres located on a portion of properties at 3731 and 3789 Gotts Hydro Road from Ag to RE Residential State with a general development plan.
Mr. Chair, we had a pre-application meeting back in January for the properties outlined on Gotts Hydro. The current zoning is Ag, current land use is Ag, and then the future land use designation is also Ag. There is their provided site plan for your reference, and again, the applicants are proposing to rezone roughly three and a half acres from Ag to RE Residential Estate in order to subdivide the existing homes that are currently under construction onto smaller lots. The remaining portion of the existing tracks will be consolidated with the existing agricultural track. So looking down to the staff's recommendation, our recommendation is approval pending any of the discussion items. Specifically, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. We just want to point out on the top of page three, considerations related to the proposed minimum home size. So looking over to page three, within a quarter of a mile, structures range from one to two stories in height, and home sizes range from 1,113 square feet to 3,930 square feet. And the median home size is 1,745 square feet, and the average is 1,755 square feet. So half of the homes have a garage or carport, and the applicant specified in DPC number four that any new residence shall contain a minimum of 1,900 square feet, but they did not specify if the square footage includes, is for the structure as a whole or is applicable only to conditioned living space, although DPC number eight requires that each resident have a two-car attached garage. That's all that staff have, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Two, I noticed in DPC two that it does allow split face block. How does that compare to surrounding structures?
Yeah, so looking to the building materials review on page three, it looks like, yeah, two-thirds have stoner brick foundations with the remaining plain face block, so it's not out of character with the area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vinyl, vinyls up there.
Yeah, 50% of the homes in the area have vinyl exteriors. And one thing we may also mention is that there are already homes on these properties, so...
I guess the only question...
Chris, can pull your mic down.
I'm sorry, I guess the only questions for the applicant is that 1,900 square feet heated and cooled.
Is the applicant here, or their representative? Hey, can't move when they're not here, can we, Hamp?
Can you get clarification as to whether or not the binding, or the design... Development plan condition, old dogs, new tricks. And this one even isn't very new. We can't get any clarification as to the DPC.
Move, we table.
This was supposed to have been on the last meeting and withdrawn.
They withdrew the application at the hearing the last time. And then they reapplied, and we communicated with the applicants just yesterday.
There he is.
Yes, there's the man.
Just come on up.
State your name and address.
Chris Blevins, 6895 Porter Pike.
Swear to tell the truth, Mr. Blevins.
Yes, I do.
Okay. You missed the staff report, and the commissioners have a couple of questions for you regarding this proposal.
The only question I have is on the 1,900 square feet, is that heated and cooled?
No, that would be a total.
Do you know what your heated and cooled would be?
It's right at 1,450.
You say there's already structures on these?
Yes, so these development plan conditions would apply if the existing homes are ever replaced in the future.
So, Mr. Blevins, is there, so the surrounding properties have an average of 1745 in heated and cooled space and have a two-car garage. Yours has a two-car garage as well. If, this is only if these homes are going to be replaced. You wouldn't do anything to the, to the homes if, that are already there. Would you find the 1,750 square feet minimum square footage acceptable? So you wanna, you wanna do a smaller home?
Talking about that much difference in square footage, 300...
Pardon me?
We're not talking about that much difference in square footage, though. I mean, between 1,700 and 1,450 are very similar in nature.
I'd probably be okay with the 1,450, just because you do have some stuff that are 1,100 in the area, so... I mean, personally, if we could change, if we can change that DPC to say 1,450 minimum cooled and heated, would you be okay with that, Chris?
It's, you know, 1420 to 1,450. I mean, it's not, it's not that much difference, and I've not been able to explain this really well, but the reason that we're doing this is because there's an 1,840's house that we're adding this acreage to. Right now, it has 10 acres, and these two tracks have five acres, and we build a lot of houses, and it's difficult to sell someone a house with five acres. What are you gonna mow five acres with? How are you gonna maintain that? And it usually winds up just a grown-up, or, you know, they come to us and ask us to cut hay on it. So the house that's back there is on the historic, in fact, the long part of it is probably one of the oldest structures still standing in Warren County. That was all land granted to a guy that was a Spanish and American War veteran. And there's a cemetery there, and all we're doing is just adding that acreage to that parcel, which, you know, is gonna make it around 17 acres, which I think makes a lot of sense for us. And we haven't decided what we're gonna do with that part of it, other than it will never be, you know, further divided.
So help me understand, then, what is your, what is your desire to have a minimum square footage that's larger than? If you're not really doing anything with those two lots anyway? Am I misunderstanding?
They're gonna build on those two lots.
They're gonna build on the two lots. Okay, I follow.
No, there, there are already homes on the two lots that are proposed. They're almost completely finished.
So how do we get homes that are already completely finished if...
Because there are two five-acre tracks right now, and building permits were issued to build one home on each of the five-acre lots. So they're wanting to reduce the acreage with the current homes and add it to the piece to the rear.
So that's, and so that triggered a rezone? I see, okay, all right.
So, Chris, the houses you're building are almost finished, or 1,420-ish?
Okay.
So they're already there.
Do you have the picture?
So he'd have to do an addition to change those. I'm following now, okay.
Yeah, there are photos that they've supplied of the two homes that are there. If that would help provide some context.
I was trying to figure out why, he was, he was zeroing in on that 1,450, and I thought, okay, why are we doing that? I get it now. Okay, all right, that, that makes much, much more sense. That's understandable.
Very nice homes, and we've, we've built a lot of these in that vicinity. I don't know about the 1,700. I don't know anybody that's building 1,700 square foot houses in that area.
They were just going by the averages of some, within a quarter-mile radius, not necessarily new builds, but what's already there.
This is between where I live and our farm. I mean, I, this is, it means a lot to me, too, so... And the 1,840's house is behind this, and that's what we're adding the acreage to.
I misunderstood. I thought you were just picking a house plan, and there was something specific about that square footage, but the, I don't think I would want you to add another addition to an existing home. I didn't realize that these homes were already built, so I think I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Blevins?
Sorry, so did we make an amendment to the fourth DPC?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We're just gonna leave it the way it is.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
I guess there's nothing else to, they're there, so there's nothing to change, really.
As I understand it, these two homes are around 1,420, 1,450, or...
That's right. They're right in that area. I don't, I won't say exactly, because we build them all the time, but I don't, you know, it's right in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Blevins. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question regarding this proposal? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, would you call for a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2023-40Z County, based upon a testimony in documents in this public hearing to propose zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance and objective action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, to propose zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is 2023-46ZBG. The Southern Retail Partners LLC, care of Emily Booth and Blake Ritchie, has filed an application to rezone approximately 12.73 acres, located on the property at Zero Hennessy Way, Vintage Wayne, Vintage Lane, and Corvette Drive from Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Before I get started, I will mention that you should have a handout at your seat. With a new set of development plan conditions, it's actually just number four, the last sentence, is different than what was included in your staff report, and I'll touch on that in just a second. We did have a pre-application meeting back in December for the property you just referenced, located off of Hennessy Way, and there's a new private roadway Vintage Lane that would serve this development along with Corvette Drive. The current zoning is highway business, and the current use is agriculture, and the future land use map designation is mixed-use commercial. And the applicants are proposing to rezone the property to RM4 in order to construct 248 multifamily units, and you can see those shown here on the concept plan. The staff found the application to be generally compatible and in compliance with the applicable review criteria from the comprehensive plan, and therefore, the staff recommendation is for approval pending the public hearing testimony. There was one item of consideration noted at the bottom of page one. However, with the revised development plan conditions, staff felt that that is no longer an item that, that needs to be up for your consideration, and it seems that the applicants have addressed all of our concerns or questions up until this point. So with that, I'm finished with the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Tad Pardue, 1010 College Street. Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ted.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's nice to be here, it's good to see you all. Tad Pardue, I represent the applicants that are here before you this evening. That is the Southern Retail Partners LLC. Southern Retail Partners LLC is essentially Blake Ritchie. Blake's with, with us this evening, and his partner Emily Booth. They're the, would be the developers on this project. Blake and Emily have developed other multifamily residential developments here in town. The Southern being one of them, which is out on Nashville Road. It's about 150 units. Similar, somewhat similar to this is predominantly in an area that is comprised of industrial uses, but it's been a very nice and quality and successful multifamily development in that part of town. This is on the northern part of town, and again, the idea here is to try to fulfill a need for housing and diversified housing, in particular, in areas north of town. Don't really have anything I can add beyond everything that is in the staff report and the things that Rachel covered in her presentation. I do understand that there's a representative here from the Corvette Museum that may have some concerns about traffic on Corvette Drive. To that issue, I'll simply point out that this isn't a preliminary phase. There are discussions with the county as far as how to configure access, but in concept, the way it's designed is to funnel most of the traffic through Vintage Lane, which is the new private road, which you'll see on the northern portion. And if you actually expand out beyond what's just depicted in the concept plan, Vintage Lane connects at Hennessy Way at a point that's actually closest to, there's a, there's a light, if you turn left off, off of Vintage Lane, there's a, there's a light there. It used to be a fruit of the loom, part of the fruit of the loom development down there. But you're actually closer to that access to get out onto the road, where you'll either go right and catch the interstate or left to get into town. So, you know, logistically, if you look at this from a larger view, we anticipate most of the traffic that's generated by this development is gonna be going out Vintage Lane, turning left, and then hitting that light that's closest to Vintage Way. And again, this is already zoned highway business. We're asking you all to consider making a recommendation to rezone it to RM4, which is a residential use, which is, in our view, incorporates a use that is much less intensive than what might be there if it were to stay highway business. So we'll be happy to answer questions. I have a representative of Landmark Engineering that's here as well, that's been working on the project, and of course, Blake can answer any questions as well that you might have for him.
Thank you, Ted. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pardue?
So, so Ted, I see that you've added the consistency of the structures to your DPCs. How's, how's the ownership? Will it be single ownership?
Well, and that should be in the DPCs, DPCs, single ownership and management.
I overlooked it. All right, very good.
We have the term "uniform" in there, Commissioner, and Rachel aptly pointed out that "uniform," I guess, probably means the same, and we've, we have both some three-story traditionally apartment buildings, but there are also some garage structures and what we'll call a carriage house, which is, will have, a garage is on the bottom and two apartments on top. So we didn't, so we had essentially three different types, four if you count the clubhouse types of structures. So to call those uniform maybe wasn't the proper term, so we wanted to make certain that they are gonna be built and designed architecturally similar. They're not gonna be the same, because they're different types of buildings.
So would it be fair to say that, let's just use your example of carriage houses. If we had two carriage houses, they would be, those two carriage houses would be same architecture, correct?
Would be.
All right, very good. Denical looking.
Denical.
Yeah. Okay, I, I think that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Pardue?
Ted, what about signage? Would there be signage for this complex?
I don't think there'll be any, is there? Probably whatever is permitted in the zoning ordinance for an RM4.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance allows an entrance sign that just identifies the name of the development. So I'm not sure what it will be named at this point, but they would be permitted to have a monument-style sign with the name of the development.
Restrictions, I guess, on sign face and height, which we'll keep.
Thank you, Ted. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Pardue? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions or oppositions to this request? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, would you call for a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2023-46ZBG, based upon a testimony in documents in this public hearing to propose zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Agreed.
Chair Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and the recommendation will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our last item tonight is 2023-44Z County. City/County Planning Commission, the applicants, Mike and Ashley Buttram, the owners, have filed an application to rezone approximately 4.4 acre, 1.4... to rezone approximately four point four acre, one point four acres located a portion of the property of one four two two Louisville Road from Ag to RE Residential State in order to remove the split zoning on the property.
Just cleanup.
So this is a cleanup? We don't have a formal staff presentation, um, but happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? All right. Hearing none. Do we need a motion?
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-three forty Z County, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
You take a vote. Chair Warren, um, may we reflect in the record that there was no one here to speak in opposition or ask questions about the, um, application?
No one here to, to speak for themselves or to have questions. So thank you, Mr. Moore.
Gay.
Yes.
Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drane. Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Uh, do we have any new business, Mr. Peterson?
No new business. I'll just mention that we... Uh, no new business. I'll just mention that, uh, you should be getting an email about, uh, either Personnel Committee or Budget Committee, depending on which every one will, will have, try to have each, uh, one each of those before the next, uh, full board meeting, so our next, uh, next meeting. So it's just budget time and, and, uh, time hopefully to hire some people, so...
Well, good. Thank you for all your work. Uh, Commissioners, any other discussion items tonight? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here.